It's six o'clock and I'm calling the Planning and Zone Commission meeting to order of May 18, 2023. Can we begin with a call, a call, a roll call?
Yes, sir. Hector Garcia?
Present.
Robby Tassaris?
Present.
Mike Maron. Manuel Manolo Rangel.
Present.
Charlie Narvaez.
Present.
Yushen Wang. Regina Portillo.
Present.
Daniela Salapas. Anamia Rial.
Present.
For the record, Chairman, you do have quorum and we were notified that Daniela Salapas is stuck in traffic. She's on her way.
Okay, I also get a text message from Commissioner Badron that he was going to be absent to this meeting. Can I just have a motion to excuse those who aren't present?
I'll make a motion to excuse those that aren't present.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Let's stand for a pledge allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every chain of justice for all. Can we move on to the consideration approval of minutes for the meeting of May 4, 2023?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Do we have any citizen comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Okay. Moving on to our presentation, a presentation regarding the City of Laredo Integrated Water Master Plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the City of Laredo hired a company to put together the master plan for the water, for our water system and our shore system. So they completed the water master plan. So Ms. Portillo made a comment last meeting about sprawl and some of the issues that we have with that. But I thought it'd be important to let you know where our status is when it comes to water in our community. And then when they finish the wastewater, I'll have them also present that so that you can get a good understanding. And I've asked Jean Belmodas to come in and do the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, my name is Jean Belmodas. For the record, I am the Liquid Studio Group. We are the public engagement and stakeholder input firm that was hired by LAN to present master plans and do town halls and things of that nature. So tonight I'll be presenting the water master plan, the integrated water master plan. And I'm just learning how to do this real quick here with this mouse. A little different from mine at the office. The Integrated Water Master Plan, the reason it's called an Integrated Water Master Plan is because we're integrating the wastewater side to it. Arduro, my colleague, Nacio Hinojosa, who was a PE with Arduro, is handling the wastewater side. But he's also very much involved in a water quality project that the City of Laredo has undertaken that kind of dovetails into what we're doing with the water master plan. He is a very, very strong subject matter expert on this item and your system. And so I've had him along with me. Arturo Garcia, your director of utilities could not be here tonight. He had an emergency. So I'm going to present and have him be my wingman. So this plan started almost three years ago. We began our engagement with the City of Laredo in 2019. Our contract was issued to us in 2020. And I think it was maybe three days after the contract was signed, approved and ready to go, we were all sent home for a 15-day cur, uh, flatten the curve and we're in the middle of a pandemic. However, we were still able to do a lot of work in that timeframe because what part of the, uh, the plan was to go in and begin to look at all of these items here. One of the very big items in the middle of that that allowed us to kind of move that forward was the look at all the existing reports that had been done for the City of Laredo. There, this is not the first water or wastewater master plan ever done for the City of Laredo. There have been several that have been done along the way. About every five years or so, you're having a water master plan. Last one was in the 2015 and there were several before that. Commissioner Garcia was on the council and we did one for the city back in, in, in the early 2000s. Part of our goals were to correctly plan for the Laredo's future growth, identify the water supply vulnerabilities, and you do have some, prepare for emergency outages, we'll look for ways to prepare for that. So look at the existing reports, take a look at your 2015 water model so that we could overlay what has happened since then and be, uh, continue to do that hydraulic model. Then prepare an infrastructure plan and submit that to the city, coordinate closely with the city staff and then make sure that our Laredo-specific model addresses the impacts and financing needs of this community. We met with your city staff, with the council. We had meetings with stakeholders along the way. There were quite a few public meetings. Unfortunately, most of those were poorly attended because they were virtual meetings. We're in the middle of a pandemic. But once we started to come out of that and start having some of the hybrid meetings, we had some really good attendance on some of those. And then there was about a hundred-question survey that was filled out. We had about 1,200 folks who filled, uh, who participated in the survey. About 1,000 of them went through the entire survey. It's quite lengthy and you'll see some of those items presented in the summary that we have here for you tonight. But it is also attached to the water master plan, which is currently available on your laredoutilities.com website, which is your utility site. You can find the water master plan there. The wastewater master plan will follow and it'll be attached to it. And again, it's still in draft form only because your model and your plan is already changing and you'll see some of that in this. So as part of this, one of the big tasks we were given is to look at your supply alternatives and demand allocations. Obviously, we want to look at the population and where, where you were now, where you will be in 20, 40, 60 years, 50 years down the road. Identify some alternatives, uh, work through some demand management issues you currently have. Look at an emergency supply issue, which I think is a very critical point that needs to be addressed. We looked at Lake Casablanca. We're always being asked, hey, how come we can't use Lake Casablanca as a source? There are some very cost prohibitive reasons why we can't. It doesn't mean it's completely excluded. It is just not a priority source for us. Reuse and scalping alternatives. You are already working on, on plans to, to use some of the effluent at some point. Right now you're using it for irrigation, but there is tertiary treatment that's available where you take it in and you treat it, you treat it again, and then you put it back into the system to, to be used as potable water. Some communities are already looking at that and they're way ahead of us. Ours, because we just don't produce enough for a bang for buck, is one of the reasons why we don't, we don't do it already. And then lastly, we look at imported groundwater. That's probably going to be your best source for a secondary water source, but there is a huge cost to that and those are decisions that the city is going to have to make, the citizens are going to have to make. We looked at all of these plans. Like I said, we did model plan alternatives, hydraulic modeling, cost estimates. We went through all of those items to eventually come up with cost estimates for your projects, do a prioritization of those projects, identify some funding sources. And then one of the big keys, one of the big tasks would also minimize your risk. So what this plan does, it represents the findings and results and recommendations from the analysis and needs assessment of your water supply, treatment, transmission, distribution system over the next 50 years. So we took a look at where we are right now in terms of population, how much water we currently own, what we're capable of treating, what we're capable of distributing, and then took that out and said, can we continue this to 2070? And what are the milestones? What are the big triggers? As you know, a pandemic impacted your census. We, we don't know or we can't. We believe that the 267,000 people that were noted in the census is probably off 50, 60,000. I mean, there was folks who just did not respond to the census. But you still have a growth rate and, and that is going to impact your ability to provide water. Should you do nothing else, if everything stays status quo, you will have an issue about 2040 where the city runs out of available water to treat and available water to distribute. Again, we had a very robust public involvement piece. We had a lot of council members did attend and did come to the workshops, did come to the town halls. We were out on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn. We had a website that was specifically for this that gave information about the system and its current state and some of the milestones that we had for the, for the water master plan. And then along the way, we were informing them of what we had and what, uh, what steps we were taking as we went through. This project drug out a little longer, again, because of the pandemic and some other changes. You all had some immediate needs that came with your infrastructure having some issues. The, I don't know if you can see it here, but if you look at it on screen, you can see that right now the City of Laredo has approximately 42,000 acre feet. That is enough water to cover one acre of land, one foot deep. That's how that translates. It's about 43,000 gallons per. So the city currently has enough water to successfully service its clients up until about 2040, 2042. If you bought no more water rights, if you found no secondary water source, if you did nothing else, just sat on your laurels because you have done some good things, you would still run out of water for the population that's expected by 2040. So the city is aggressively doing a few things right to the state. They currently buying more water rights on the Rio Grande. Challenge. Rio Grande water is all allocated. It's over allocated. What that means is somebody owns all the water in the Rio Grande. Most municipalities are still able to draw because they get first right. People are going to get first, farmers will get it second and anybody else gets it after that. But the reality is with climate change, with treaty issues with Mexico and the delivery of water into the system, you're basically going to run out of water at some point. Even if you continue to buy it, you'll basically be buying paper and there won't be any water to have. So that's why so many communities, especially along the I-35 corridor, have gone and diversified their sources. City of San Antonio, I think, has, correct me if I'm wrong, nine sources total that they bring into, uh, into their system. Saws, again, not owned by the City of San Antonio per se. It's not a political, part of the political organization subdivision. It is a separate entity. But they have, along the way, bought more surface water or groundwater. Surface water being rivers, lakes, streams. Groundwater being aquifers, wells and things of that nature. So one of the questions that was asked in the survey is how urgent of an issue do you think acquiring a secondary water source is? And you can see that 38% of the people down to midway, the three-star, over half of them felt that this was a really, really important issue. Do you think the city should invest in a secondary water source? Split right down the middle, so to speak. They want, some said yes, some said no, and some said it depends on the cost. The truth of the matter is it can be very expensive, but what do you do with that water? Your industry fits down, people move away. Those are the issues that happen. How concerned were people about the Rio Grande running out of rain and dry? Very concerned. And how concerned are you about the possibility of it becoming contaminated or unstable, unusable? The city's cross, the city's crossing for hazardous material is at Columbia. They have containment systems. They have a lot of things in place to keep from a bad spill getting into the river. But that's not, not to say that it can't happen or that Mexico or a community upstream or just something that happens along the Rio Grande that, uh, that could pollute the, the river. Your intakes are both upstream and downstream of areas of high population. So you would have to wait for that water to go by. What do you do in the time, in that timeframe? The city would need about 23 million gallons a day for you to be able to still have water. Right now the city has enough storage for you to last maybe 2.9 days tops if we rationed absolutely to the, the fullest. And as you all know, when, when you announce that you're not in heavy water, guess what everybody else does? They go to fill up their bathtubs, they go fill up their sinks, they fill up their swimming pools. They do whatever they can to hold water. So 2.9 days is probably not an accurate number. Water supply, the city's got all of its water from the Rio Grande. We, you know, we've said that throughout this presentation and in, in this particular master plan, you're going to see it throughout, that this is the issue that we currently have. It is a blessing and a curse, the fact that the Rio Grande is very affordable in terms of treating water. Right now the City of Laredo treats water for just under a dollar per thousand. That's treatment cost before it was set out for distribution. Treated water at our quality delivered to the City of Laredo on a secondary source back in 2007 when the council member Garcia was on the council with me as well, was being proposed to the city at $3.21 per thousand. That's three times the current cost of production. You still have transmission and in some cases you may have treatment, although in most cases we'd be asking for it to come in at a pre-treated specification. So you can see what that could cause when you go to secondary water. We did an extensive analysis of your system, everything from the water treatment plants to your distribution system, to your storage system, uh, and then your practices and protocols. And all of that's included in, in the master plan study. It's kind of engineer-ish and, uh, but we are planning to have a workshop and we're going to try to put it in layman's terms so people can really get a good feel for what the city's doing for you. We did put in a capital improvement plan. The city's already begun to execute that. You'll see this in the slideshow coming through. And we're also did a cursory study on impact fees. This is something that's going to impact all of you all as commissioners. The City of Laredo will look at impact fees. The city council has already authorized the, uh, the city to start putting together a committee. There's a certain set of rules that you have to follow that are governed by the state on impact fees. There are some members of the community and the engineering, uh, community that want impact fees and there are some that say they don't want them. And there are pros and cons to both and we'll go through some of those. The other thing that we looked at, there was a big question during the surveys and during the building of this master plan was water rates. And what are the water rates that Laredo has compared to other folks? Well, every year TML, Texas Municipal League, puts out a water wastewater rate survey. They voluntarily ask communities to submit their information. Not all communities submit. A total of 491 cities reported that they provide water and service to residents. The average cost of water usage is 5,000 gallons in all cities. The cost of that is 52.91 and the residential usage is about 6,006 gallons in overall cities. Bear in mind, it involves cities of 2,000 population or less, up to those above half a million. So that's a big, big bucket and the average is really somewhat skewed. But you'll see the City of Laredo somewhere along those averages. Water fees by population. This is one of the slides that was not available to you all when we sent out the initial package, but is one that the, uh, utilities director and some of the members of the utilities advisory board wanted us to include in this because this is part of the education piece on where we are in rates. We are at 2,001 to 350 size cities. We, there are only four cities that reported. Average total customers of 75,000, 8,000 average usage, $31.44 for 5,000 gallons on average. Now, these numbers do not reflect solid waste, environmental services, anything else that's on your bill. If you've ever seen your bill, it's got six or seven other charges on there. This is just the cost of water and you'll see one for cost of wastewater. In here, you'll see that at 10,000, uh, you're looking at approximately $57 and then the commercial side is 335.66 for, uh, average of the state. I mean, for, for communities that size and then 1,139 for 10,000 gallons, 200,000 gallons in the commercial side. Your averages are down at the bottom. These are some of the details in there. You can see the four cities that kind of mirror us, Plano, Irving, Lubbock and McKinney. All with populations somewhere, you know, close to us. I would say that Irving and Lubbock are probably neck and neck in terms of census. Plano is a little more, but I guarantee the City of Laredo is probably as big as Plano in terms of population. Total customers, 82,000 for Plano, 50 for Irving, 96 for Lubbock and 73,000 for McKinney. The usages are pretty much the same with the exception of McKinney. That's kind of an outlier. 14,000 gallons average use per month per customer. That's quite big. The lowest rate on this survey that was reported was $21.11 from the City of Irving. And on the 10,000 gallon side, it was $44.71. On the commercial side, it was $322 for 50,000 gallons and 1,010.28 for 200,000 gallons McKinney and Irving, Plano respectively. That's the question. How does Laredo compare? The state average is 75,000. Laredo has 86,000 total customers in its residential system. The average usage was about 8,600 for the state. Laredo's at 7,094. We're a little bit above everybody else's average, but not, not by far, not by much. With the exception of McKinney, for whatever reason McKinney has a lot of water choosing. Average water rates. This is the big question everybody had for us at the council meeting and then again at utilities. Well, how do we compare to the others in our size cities? You can see that we have the lowest water rate for 5,000 gallons and the lowest rate for 10,000 gallons on the residential side. Only Irving is slightly above us. The rest are at least $10 or more above where we are. McKinney is $20 more than we do. The state average is $52.91, so we are $30 less than the state average. Very, very affordable water. And there, there is a slide in here that was done during the survey that's going to talk about perceptions. On the commercial side, again, you can see that the City of Laredo is at 285. It is the lowest rate out there for commercials. So if you're wanting to start a big business or big, big industry, Laredo's going to sell you cheap water. If you get above 10,000 gallons, look at the difference. We're half the price of the lowest city out there. Now, that means that there's room for, for, for it to go up, but you don't want to go up just for the sake of going up. You want to go up just because, you want to go up because you want to tie it to capital improvements, additional water acquisition, anything that, that helps the community grow, that's why you want to do it. You don't want to do it just to say, well, I've got $500 a month that I'm leaving out on somebody's, on the table because the communities our size are charging more. Wastewater fees. Again, average is, customers is, um, total, the total customers was 5,0971. Again, that's skewed because you have populations 2,000 or less. And then your, your averages in rates, 4566 for 5,227, 45 for the commercial side. These communities, again, you can see the number of total customers is about the same as Laredo's and you'll see that in the comparison. And their rates are, uh, on average at that clip of four that are about our size, $39.64 for residential sewer, 333.1100 for, uh, commercial. Laredo's average wastewater consumption, we're in the mix. You can see the state average is 75. The City of Laredo uses about 66 on average. McKinney is slightly above us. Irving is below us and then the others you can see are consuming, have more customers than we do. On average usage, everybody's about the same except we are now part of that outlier group. We're about 8,100. That is, again, we're, we tend to take in a lot of wastewater in our system. McKinney again reports only 14,000. The state of Texas, our TML, did not, does not make any representation that these are absolutely 100% accurate. We can because we got these from, uh, the cities. We got that from your department, uh, from their most recent audit. So we, we can say that those are accurate numbers. But again, that 14,000 just seems to stick out there. Cost. The cost of wastewater for 5,000 gallons in Laredo is $25.29. It is about half of McKinney, uh, about $20 less than the state average. Only Irving has a lower fee for wastewater. And when you get to 10,000 gallons, uh, we are still the lowest rate for wastewater. On the commercial side, you can, you can see that we are at the bottom of the rung. We are about in line with the state average for commercial wastewater at 5,000 gallons. And then we're at $430 for 10,000, which is about half the state average and $350 less than your closest comparison, which is Lubbock. This is one of the big things in the survey that came out. While people were privately saying, yes, I like the water, in their commentary, they were saying some really, these are the ones that we could print. We left the ones that we couldn't print out. Do you believe that you're getting a good value for your current water wastewater rates? If no, explain. 81% of the people said yes on the survey and only 19 said no. But in the comments, holy cow. I mean, you can see sewer rates are much higher than water and for one person too much, we charge more when it rains. Nasty water, I can't drink. Sewer rates are too, there, there were some that were more explicit than this. So we left those out, but, uh, both in English and Spanish. Survey was available in English and Spanish and so we had some of those come in. By and large, one of the biggest challenges utilities has is the perception that its water system is not prepared for the future, that it's not currently meeting current demands and that for the bang for buck, the citizens are not getting a good value. That's what the public perception is. But when they fill out these surveys, they were saying something completely different. They're saying, yes, we think it's a good, good value. When you compare it to bottled water, you're getting really, really cheap water. Everybody, if we charge a bottled water rates for 10,000 gallons, holy cow, you couldn't afford it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
So, yes, you want to ask questions? Can you come back? Let me just finish and then we can come back. We'll move on to the slides. The other part of this that is really critical to you all and one of the reasons we're here tonight is that you're going to have to be faced with water impact fees at some point, water wastewater impact fees. The city may as well take up at that time, other impact fees like solid waste, environmental, police and fire protection, all those things can be involved or incorporated into a impact rate study, impact fee rate study and then assigned versus annexation fees. That's the way the city currently takes in those fees is through annexation. Eventually, hopefully, attainment through impact fees, which are governed by the state. Impact fees are not governed by the local municipality. The rules on how you use that money are governed by the state. So a lot of developers, a lot of engineers who are, uh, building in areas like you mentioned in your comments during the last meeting, out at the edge of the system. Well, you know, at that point, uh, they're putting a lot of infrastructure. They're paying for upsizing of lines. They're paying for, uh, future growth into a lift station or elevated storage tank. But that money winds up going somewhere into another part of the city through annexation fees. They're not restricted to that area nor are they restricted to those projects. So impact fees changes that some and boxes those in so that as that development grows, those monies available address those impacts to that system and a portion of those go back to, to address issues to the core system. How concerned are you with Laredo's water, uh, water needs? 70% no, 30% yes. Out of sight, out of mind. As long as we don't have a bowl water notice, as long as the water's still flowing from your tap, no one seems to worry about the future of water in Laredo. The minute the water goes bad or you have to shut down your pipes, everybody's in uproar. The survey was taken probably six months after the, the, uh, the first bowl water notice we had that year. And since then, we had two subsequent bowl water notices. The survey was available for them to take and come in and, and, and we published it, asked people to come in and, and make comment during those periods and still nobody came in and said much. And we wound up with 70% of the people saying they're not really concerned with Laredo's water needs. Do you feel like the city's made sufficient investment in its water resource to handle the population? No, that's one place where, um, getting information out to the community about what the city is doing. The fact that you guys issued 87 million dollars in bonds last year for infrastructure, no one seems to know that that's happening. So a little bit of a disconnect. Again, on this potential water impact fee, there are some comparisons that we've made. If we were to charge an impact fee and did the 50% of the maximum allowable, the city's impact fees would be well above $7,500 for every lot that you bring on. You can see how much less those others are. Again, that's only based on a formula that says this is the, the needs of the community in terms of CIP. This is a, uh, a factor that they use and then that equals the maximum allowed. We cut it in half and it's still, it was well above what the city currently charges and well above what everybody else charges. So there's going, in that discussion with the impact advisory committee, you'll have to come up with a, a fee that works for everybody and allows for development to continue. The city currently has about $160 million on its credit card, so to speak, available. When we talk about the amount of money at the very top, you see where it says 163 at the top, that is under its current rate structure, the city can borrow up to 163 million dollars to do projects. So we prioritize those projects on this list for the city as part of the master plan. And in 2022, in October, we issued 87 million. The city issued 87 million dollars to begin the first eight projects you see on that list. Biggest amongst those is number two. As everybody remembers, there was a water line that broke that half the city was out of water for, for several days. That project is That project has already been, half of the project's already been designed and is out for bid for construction within the next week or so, in record time. Typically, those take a little longer. The other half of that project, which is on the west side of the Secate Creek, goes all the way back to the Jefferson Water Treatment Plant, that's also under design already and that should come in shortly thereafter. That one's going to take longer because you have to cross the creek, Army Corps of Engineer, you have to cross 35 text dot and you have to cross the railroad, you have to go through the railroad as well. So those are going to take longer. But the most critical portion of that is in that section that is east of Secate Creek. That's where you had your water line break and that's where you have a line that is 60 years old and has broken a few other times, but the utilities department did a phenomenal job and you never knew that, that you were going through the very same thing you did last, last year when you had that water line break. Okay. Why does South Laredo have such an issue with water when growing? Why does South Laredo always get impacted? The infrastructure in South Laredo is actually relatively new. It's almost as new as everything in North Laredo. The developers go in there, they put in new water lines, new fire hydrants, new wastewater lines. They put everything in there. They contribute to the transmission lines, they contribute to elevated storage tanks, all of that happens and so South Laredo looks pretty good. And if you look at this heat map that we have, you can see down in South Laredo as you get further south, there are really not a lot of problems out there. But if you take a look at that core part of the city, which is the eastern and western division of the city, the oldest parts, that's where your oldest infrastructure is. And guess where your water plant is? 63 million gallon capacity water plant is at Jefferson and it has to traverse all of that aging infrastructure to get to South Laredo. So that's your first biggest problem. You have great water, you have a great water treatment plant with excess capacity, but you can't get it out there because it's running across these old, old lines. So that is the first focus. There's 36 inch line, there's a 24 inch line that was on this list of the capital improvement that's on there. There are Bartlett to Mohawk to Bartlett, basically doing another loop to bring water in from the north to help prevent those types of things from happening in the future. There are considerations to retrofit Hendrix, which is at the old Mercy Hospital, and maybe bring those tanks back online. There's still some discussions on where that goes. But that is your biggest challenge, getting good, clean water from here to this point here. So a lot of your infrastructure improvements are going to take place in this area here. You'll see a large investment from the city in this area to help prevent that. Now, does that mean that South Laredo doesn't have any infrastructure projects going? No, they do. They've got quite a bit coming in future issuances, which will be done probably 2024, 2025, and the last portion of this will be 2027. Again, bear in mind that this is, the amount of money you currently have is 163 million. You have a $390 million capital improvement plan that's proposed by the water master plan. Where do you get the other 130 million dollars that you need, the other 230 million dollars that you need? That's discussions that the council will take up. There are some pending tasks that have come out of the water master plan. The requests for interest statements for secondary water were issued last month. It was scheduled close on the 18th. We got several responses, so now the city is going to begin to negotiate with those folks who are interested in selling us water. You have to have an impact fee discussion. Planning period for that is 2023, 2033. It encompasses a tenure CIP with land assumptions that you all produce, this commission produces. You have right now about $303 million in eligible improvement projects that you could bring, 20,000 K projected increase of subsurface utility engineering, the eligible costs divided by the SUE gives you a maximum impact fee. You have a maximum impact fee of $15,238, which is way above what you charge now for annexation. I mean, you all see that every day when we come in here, when people have to bring in letters of credit and things of that nature, they're covering annexation fees and platting fees and things of that nature. All of this will be discussed in that. And so folks have already been appointed to that. To be able to have the impact study and propose an impact fee, you have to go through the development of the assumptions, which is already done, and a proposed impact fee, we have that. There is a public hearing on this, that's already been had. And now the, the next step, no, I'm sorry, this is coming. And then there's an appointment of an advisory committee that's already taking place. So folks have already been appointed. You have 30 days for the committee to approve the assumptions, have a second public hearing, and then come back and adopt the orders. City council would like us to have this done before budget so that they can decide whether they need to increase rates, add this to the development community's rates as they change their schedules. So all that's coming forward. Questions?
So I'm interested in talking about the looping projects. It looks like in the water master plan draft, there's about, there's over 100 million allocated just to sort of fix those looping concerns around the city. So as part of the planning and zoning commission, I'm interested in seeing how we can plan for the future to avoid the, exactly the type of development that, is my understanding, led us to have several boil water notices in the past couple of years where the water sort of sits stagnant in certain areas of the city because of usage and because the lines were not looped. So how can, what's your advice to us as a commission of what we should be thinking about and looking at when, you know, the city continues to grow and sprawl? So what, yeah, what should we consider so that we don't need to go back and loop lines, you know, 20 years down the line?
I'm not going to give you my opinion because that's not my, not my place, that's not my role. I'm basically giving you the information that the engineers are putting out here. But what they have suggested as time goes on, that the city, again, engage in, you know, going out and looping the existing lines. As new development comes on, the utilities department may be requiring developers to provide that looping in those particular areas where everything is dead ending. Part of the reason why you have the issues with, with consumption is that the system was extended as a requirement to meet legislation that was passed 20, 30 years ago to provide water to the colonias. And in that, we were asked to bring not just a small line for people to get water, but large lines and put fire hydrants. And so now you have a large infrastructure out there that can provide water to a very large community, no one to buy it. So basically, you overbuilt the system as a requirement and it's a catch 22. Yes, you took care of the poor folks in the colonias who are victims of poor development, but now you have a system that is in peril every single week. And I'll have Nacho come up and visit with you a little bit because his particular project was water quality, making sure that we didn't have any obfuscation, that the system didn't get any more boil water notices, all those things. Nacho was able to take care of with his group and work with staff to flush lines. And obviously, you don't want to flush lines that's good, clean water that you're putting down the drain, but it is going into the creeks, it is going out to the Rio Grande eventually. There is some benefit of it and there are some projects that we've suggested to council that potentially they could take to not let the water just hit the ground and go somewhere. But in the interim, you need to have it unless you move water. So unfortunately, if you stop development in those areas, you will never get to a point where you can cure that because as, as those developers enter the system, they are basically paying for the looping that you want the rest of the taxpayers to pay for. So that's a good opportunity for you to look at those places and say, how do we incentivize people to tie into those dead end areas? Maybe the city creates a loop and then allows for projects to go forward in those areas and gets a developer to chip in on some of the infrastructure that's required so that you don't have this issue again. Also, the, the way that the planes are, basically the way the water is segregated right now, the city is currently working very diligently to find ways to keep that water moving and keep it, keep it in, in good standing. It's a difficult job. They have a great system now in place at the Jefferson Treatment Plant, at the distribution points. They're monitoring this on a daily basis. Nacho, do you have your?
Dashboard, I was blocked, but we have a dashboard.
For the record.
Ignacio also with Ardua Engineering for the record. So as he was saying, we have a system now, we have a dashboard, a water quality dashboard, where we monitor 33 points out of the distribution system daily. So we have access to that, management has access to that, utilities department, multiple people. So we're always looking at the water quality at any given point in time of the day. So when, when there is issues, it's a live system, right? There's low demand in some areas, there's high demand. So anyways, we're just trying to address that, sometimes through flushing. Chemical boosting is another tactic that we use. Specifically on the, on the looping the lines, my recommendation, and I see some of the colleagues here, is just putting some thought on the engineering side, putting some thought into where the developments are heading to either leave the easements there, to be able to loop the line in the future when the future phases come in. But again, just having the thought that, you know, foresight of, okay, what's coming, right? And not just leaving it as a dead end. I'll tell you, we have about probably 2,000 dead ends, but feasibility wise, we could probably only loop 10% of those. Whether it be money, money, land issues, you know, it's just, we can't fix what's been done, but we just can look into the future. And I think if the utilities department works with the planning department, the developers, I think that that thought, you know, that thought process can be, you know, taken into consideration, just make sure that everything moving forward is, is looped and we don't have stagnant water at that end.
Real quick question, percentage wise, in our, in the capacity that we have, what percentage wise are we, are we handling when it comes to that? So. Very, it's very small.
In terms of looping the lines?
Checking lines and everything that you do automatically. It's a 10, 15% of our, of what we have.
You mean in terms of checking water quality? Oh, yes. So what we do, and the thought before, we're not going to be able to check every, every location, right? So we pick locations across the system that is representative of the water quality in that area.
So is it a guessing game or is it based?
Not a guessing game. It's based on, on data, right? Based on data. So we have, for example, we checked out each booster station, elevated storage tanks. So we have 13 of those sites, right? Then we go out, say San Isidro, we have one location there and we, we tracked before three or four sites there. But we saw that the water quality was, was pretty stable in that area and it was, one point was representative of everything else. So we reduced the amount of monitoring that area and we focused, we relocated those other points to another area of town. One was, I can tell you, Lakeside as well. We used to not, before 2021, we were not looking at Lakeside. Lakeside is one of those areas that has dead ends. It's the farthest point in the system. So we relocated one point to, to check that the water quality was good every day and that it was, again, representative of, of the whole area. So it's in the future. You know, what's an issue now may not be an issue in the future, so those points will be relocated along the, around the city as we grow.
It's a moving target. It, it really is a moving target. As they address certain issues and are able to bring technology to bear in some cases or the system itself is just stabilizing because of new development, they're going to continue to move those, those testing points to keep tracking, making sure that the, the system stays at optimum.
I will say, as far as water quality and big kudos to the utility department, I've gone before council. The last water bill due to water quality was in, in July of 2021. But there hasn't been any water quality issues since and a lot of it has been because of their dedication and they, they work round the clock on that. So we are only helping them, but they're doing all the work. So as far as water quality goes, I just want to take this, you know, audience and say that it's, it's been turned around, there's still work to do, but there's no concerns at this moment with regards to water quality.
One more, one more thing if I may add to that, just because in, in, Ardua and the city, city's utility staff has done such a great job that they're very close to having a superior water quality rating, which is what TCEQ gives you. Part of that is curing all of your past issues, any violations you may have had, anything that's been standing that hasn't been resolved, plus adopting processes, procedures, protocols for the future. And TCEQ, the last time they were here, they wrote a glowing letter about how well the city has done since that boil water notice that took place in 2021. So kudos to their staff at Ardua and also, yeah, everybody from Arturo all the way down to the last guy that turns the valve every morning. Those guys have done a really, really good job. Underpaid, undervalued, they're just good people.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say, first of all, that I'm very excited that this is before us. I feel like our water situation has been critical for some time now and we can assume it's going to continue to be a problem with climate change and everything we are facing. So it's great that I hear that you've been doing some outreach, but I think it's important that the community is aware of this and that they know what is coming for them as well. So when you talk about doing outreach and getting like over 1,000 responses, where are you doing the outreach? Is the survey translated? Because even though I know how hard it is to get people to respond to surveys, still 1,000, it's less than 1% of our population. And my second question is if this master plan is going to come with any considerations for maybe conservation strategies and maybe also partnering with different organizations for green infrastructure? Because I mean, that's truly a very good way of dealing with stormwater discharge. So investing in infrastructure is very critical, but it's also very expensive and there could be additional strategies and recommendations that we could consider as well.
Chairman, those are all valid points and really hats off to your team over at utilities. They have somebody specifically who addresses all of the water use issues in terms of conservation. Ms. Ayala Vivian over, who's stationed over at the water museum, she does a phenomenal job of going into the schools and teaching kids on, on how to, you know, conserve water, how to protect the water system by not, by not flushing wipes into your wastewater system or flushing grease into your wastewater system or down your sink. All those things are being handled in such a great level. If you ever look through her programs, they're phenomenal and they're still working on them. They do a really good job. They built a brand new website, laredoutilities.com. That's a brand new website that is easy to navigate, has a lot of information on there, easy to find. However, it's a two edged sword when it comes to conservation. The city of Laredo's utility department is a business. It needs to generate revenue so it can pay for future expansion, for future maintenance, all those things. The more you conserve, the less money you bring in. So it's got a careful balance on how we do that. And I know that in our recommendations, they are looking at potential water rate increases that down the road. Maybe not next year, maybe not next year, but maybe the year after that. We don't know yet. That's all, I mean, it's a very dynamic plan because as things are happening right now, primarily from the development communities in the audience, they're bringing on new, new projects that were recognized in the master plan. We went to planning zoning, we had them send us all of their master plans so that we could isolate the areas of growth and, and prepare for future growth. But unfortunately, the more you save on water, the less revenue the city gets. And I know that the perception is, well, if you save it, we'll have more water. Not so, because unlike San Antonio and Austin, there's no place to store it here. Part of our study, we went out and looked at what's called ASR, aquifer stores and recovery. There's no place to pump the water that we own because we don't use it all every year. Remember, we have an excess right now of water. We produce approximately, have the capacity to produce, up to 85 billion gallons a day. We're only producing about 40, 42 because that's the need. So all the rest of that water is just flowing down the river. We own it, but we can't, you can't use it, you can't store it. Although some of it does have what's called Class A rights and you can store them, you have what's called the right of impoundment. You can take them and put them into a lake or some other facility, but you just don't have any in this area. And we looked at some of the aquifers that were in this area and they were just too porous or they, they were unable to have the recovery rates that we would need. But again, yes, something that's, that's factored into this. The state mandates a lot of those things for us to, to continue to promote water conservation. And you can see that we're somewhere kind of in the mix on average with consumption. Per capita, I wanted to say that Vivian told me earlier today, it's about 135 gallons per capita per person on a daily use. So, I mean, yes, daily use. So in terms of outreach, during the pandemic, it was really difficult to get people to respond and the more we, not because people weren't in a position to, to see it, they were at home for the most part, on their phones, going to Facebook, going to LinkedIn, Twitter and everywhere else because they couldn't go anywhere, but so was everybody else. And so the mass amount of information and things that were going on online buried some of these opportunities for us to take in information. This master plan will go on the road again as a workshop and we'll probably have some more opportunities for people to give input. But the survey shut down back in 2022, just last year, at the end of the fiscal year in September. in September, we closed down the survey. We still have a component that we'd like to put out at some point. We had asked folks to fill out the survey, we have all the information for them, and anybody who participated would be entered into a drawing for a television. Well, we've got 10 TVs that we need to give out to somebody, but we're waiting for the master plan to finish, take this thing on the road, and then be able to maybe have a drawing here at council where they can choose the winners of those. District 7, by the way, had the highest participation in the survey. District 7, and Councilwoman Betis, for her credit, she was out there shaking the bushes to make sure people took.
The biggest thing with social media, I'll say, it's best when people spread the word, when a public figure, when someone that's active on social media likes it. Because you go to Utilities Department, and sometimes the only like there is, is, I like, I go in, however, so you go and.
But what Anna says, Anna, is that we have to translate it, because many of the ones that use the water, sometimes, they don't, they don't choose the English.
Yes, it's in Spanish too. So it's the two languages. And when she said it was translated, I was thinking that it was already prepared, no. The study was also prepared, but it was also in English and Spanish. And they had the opportunity to give the question in any way. Mr. Chairman, the other issue related to that is that the city spends a significant amount of its budget in promotional budget at Utilities, going to the schools and trying to educate everyone on water and the necessity to preserve it, to protect the river, through both environmental and utilities. And so it's a big component, but you're right, the more we get it out, the better. Any other questions? No questions?
I would just add, like, if you are in need of, like, outreach, I'm sure, you know, the radio is a great way of printing things, because sometimes the digital divide, it's a real issue with some communities. So just print out like a QR code, like you said, like, new generations are very tech-savvy, and I would say, like, drop it, the community centers, libraries, so more people that may not have their own device could have access to those things.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our company is Liquid Studio Group, that is what we do for a living. Besides doing public engagement, stakeholder outreach, we build websites, we do social media, we do Google campaigns. So we were hired, as part of, part of our role was to do that as well, but mainly was to go out and prepare these town halls. Right now, we have the capability of going out and doing a town hall where there's absolutely no electricity, no internet connections. We have devices and we have enough equipment to be able to do this in the middle of a ranch, in the middle of nowhere. We'll do a town hall wherever you all ask us to do one. Albeit, our contract is, for that particular project, is coming to an end. We're winding down and doing these presentations, we've reserved some money in our budget to do the outreach on the finished plan, but we're waiting also on wastewater, so we can take it all on the road. The wastewater, we'll do both, the entire integrated plan there at that point.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think that it's important that when these kind of reports are done, that we have them come through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So like you said, as soon as they finish with the sewer, we'll have that presentation brought to you also.
Let the record show that Commissioner Saba showed up at 6:05.
Yes.
We're going to move on to public hearing, open the public hearing, the recommendation of an ordinance going on to item 7A. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Cielo Rado by authorizing the issuance of a specially used permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on Lot 1, Block 1, Northridge Commercial Plat, located at 8511 McPherson Road, Suites 109, 110, and 111, 3,000 square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have applicant, she has a she/her's order, we have Batista Holdings applicant, we have Sandra Falcon as a representative. We have the property location, which is at Lot 1, Block 1, Northridge Commercial Plat, located at 8511 McPherson Road, Suites 109, 110, and 111, which is 3,000 square feet. We have a zone change for a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. Proposed uses of restaurant serving alcohol. We have letter sent 45, and 200 feet, we have none for and none against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation list app supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening. For the record, I'm Sandra Falcon, hearing as a representative of the restaurant Cinco Villa, and I'm in favor of the motion. If you have any questions that I may answer, then just let me know.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Do you concur with the comments?
I don't have any comments at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody else wishes to speak in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against this item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I do have a question.
Sure.
So in this type of permit, could it be that we give the permit only to the specific restaurant? Or why is it in the images that, like, it covers the entire lot?
So you're correct, this is going to be specific to the location.
Oh, it's the three.
So you'll see that the suite numbers are listed. 109, 110, and 111 are the suite numbers that this will represent.
Okay, so it's just the, it's just one restaurant?
Yes.
Motion to close and support the gold recommendation of staff.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 7B. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Cielo Rado by authorizing the issuance of a specially used permit for restaurants serving alcohol on lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, Block 1877, Eastern Division, a tract of land containing approximately 3,722.5 square feet out of, and part of a 15,432.35 square feet tract out of former section of Ross Street between India Avenue and Canada Avenue, being bounded on the north by Block 1877, Eastern Division, and on the south by Block 1878, Eastern Division. City of Laredo per plat recorded in volume 7, page 15, of the Webb County, Texas plat records, said 15,432.35 square feet, a tract of land being the property described and warranted deed from the city of Laredo to W.E. Haynes Realty Limited, dated June 30, 1998, and recorded in volume 651, pages 23 to 27, of the Webb County Official Public Records, and Lot 4, Block 1878, Eastern Division, located at 3,000 High Mesa Bata Memorial Highway and 3,000 Nigada Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have the applicant, and which is that these hands is the owner, we have Manuel Batista as the applicant, and Nancy Batista as representative. Property location, lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, Block 1877, Eastern Division, approximately 3,722 square feet, and Lot 4, Block 1878, Eastern Division, located at 3,000 High Mesa Bata Memorial and 3,000 Nigada District. Zone changes, a special use permit for restaurants serving alcohol. Proposed uses of restaurants serving alcohol. We have letters sent 20, we have none for and none against. Just a quick background, we have an ordinance of 2017 and dash O dash 15, which was an SUP. And on February 14, 2017, City Council approved of an SUP for a restaurant serving alcohol. Location view. Street view, I'm sorry, aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation list app supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anybody who wishes to speak against this item?
Hi, my name is, I represent Mr. Batista. My name is Nancy Batista, and I don't know if you have any questions.
So you're in favor of the item?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions for the representative?
No. This is sushi madre, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you concur with the comments that are listed under the SUP? You're fine with the comments listed?
Yes.
This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak against this item? If there's no other questions for the staff or the applicant, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 7C. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Cielo Rado by amending ordinance 2014 dash O dash 092, which authorize a conditional use permit for a truck sale center on the south half of Lot 5, Lot 5A, Block 266, Western Division, and a tract of land containing 0.2046 acres, 8,914 square feet, more or less out of Lot 7, Block 266, situated in the Western Division of Cielo Rado, Webb County, Texas, located at 1512, 1514, 1518, Santa Ursula Avenue, in order to remove whom the permit is issued, and amend the hours of operation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have CHV Investments LLC as the owner, we have Omero Vela as applicant, and Annabella Ramirez as the representative. Property location, Lot 5, 5A, Block 266, Western Division, and approximately 0.2046 acres, located at 1512, 1514, and 1518 Santa Ursula Avenue. We have a zone change request, which is an amendment of a conditional use permit for a truck sale center. Proposed use is a truck sale center. We have letters sent that were 18, we have none for and none against. Quick background, we have ordinance 2014 dash O dash 092, which was a CUP. On August 4, 2014, City Council approved of a CUP for a truck sale center, and the requested CUP amendment for ordinance 2014 dash O dash 092 are as follows. So the CUP issuance, they requested the removal of the CUP issuance of Roberto Di Perez and Francisco Gervella, and the hours are to be, proposed to be amended, will be from Monday through Friday, from 9:30 a.m. through 6:00 p.m., and they will close on Saturday and Sunday, which differs from the original hours, which were Monday through Friday, 9:30 a.m. through 7:00 p.m., Saturday from 9:00 a.m., 9:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and will close on Sundays. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation list app supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Annabella Ramirez for the record, and I'm supporting.
Thank you.
And I agree with.
Comments? Any questions for the applicant?
No.
We have a question to approve.
Yes.
Just a quick question, a quick question for that. So you don't want any of, like, you don't want this permit to be under anyone's name? Just to be issued without a name, so that we can transfer it?
Yes.
Is that, is that okay?
Do the exhibit?
Correct.
So this is, we got a public hearing, so anybody who's against this item? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
One second.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 7D. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Cielo Rado by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for a bar on Lot 1, Block 1, Frank J. Guerra subdivision, located at 98 Caixa de Norte lobby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the applicant, we have Sania Amin owner, we have Rebecca Regalado as the representative. Property location, we have Lot 1, 5A, Block 1, Frank J. Guerra subdivision, located at 98 Caixa de Norte, which is the lobby of 1,124 square feet. We have a zone change request for a conditional use permit for a bar. Proposed use is a bar. Letter sent is 20, we have none for, and we have one against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. We have the zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation list app supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Please come forward.
Can I represent Sanjiva Min? I'm from Holwood Suites.
If you could state your name for the record, please.
Bindi Baghut.
Okay. And you're, you're in favor of that item, you're okay with the comments listed?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for the representative? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak against this item? If not, what are the questions?
Motion to close and support the staff.
I have a question. To me, it came, to me, it came the ticket, because I live at the 200s. Like, I live in the 200 feet.
Great, yes.
And the thing is that the Hampton is the hotel, and they don't serve alcohol, and they just wanted to serve alcohol. But I don't know if I can vote.
Thank you.
That's the only thing.
I think we can ask legal.
I guess we can ask legal.
I abstain.
Oh, I get you.
You can, if you prefer to. I believe that the impact, your vote would have the same impact as if it was a member of the general public, so I don't think there would be any.
That's the only question I had, because.
There's no financial interest, so there's no.
No, right?
Yeah, and any impact that you would be experiencing would be the same as that of anybody within the 200-foot radius, so it's not, you know.
Like, like a normal vote. That's what I thought, but I wanted to clarify.
So we have a motion, Commissioner Garcia, a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Villanueva. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 7E. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Cielo Rado by rezoning approximately 4.35 acre tract of land situated in Porcion 39, Abstract 250, Jose Antonio Masario, original grantee within the limits of the Cielo Rado in Webb County, Texas, said 4.3542 acre tract being out of, and part of Habul Holdings Limited Liability Company, as recorded in volume 4543, pages 455 to 467 of the Webb County deed records. Webb County, Texas, located south of Tessis Drive and west of Highway 83 from AG Agricultural District to R1B, single-family high-density district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is HAPO Holdings LLC as the owner. Portos Engineering is the applicant and the representative. Approximately 4.35 acres located south of Tesis Drive and west of US Highway 83. Is the location, the zone change request is from an AG to an R1B. The proposed use is residential. Letter sent for 4, 4-0, against 0. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff supports or proposed zone change? Proposed motion? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It's a public hearing. Anybody who speaks?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Wayne Adams, Portos Engineering, we support the zone change. We're here for any questions.
Any questions, Chairman? Thank you. It's a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak against? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 7F. Amending the zoning ordinance map of Cielo Rado by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for veterinarian indoor animal confinement veterinary clinic on Lot 1, Block 1, Anami Plaza Plat, located at 3311 East Delmar Boulevard, Suite 201.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Anami Plaza. Anami Plaza LLC is the owner. Rio Grande Veterinary Clinic, P LLC, is the applicant. Cornerstone Land Use Consulting LLC, Daniel Tejina, is the representative. The property location is on Lot one, Block one, Anami Plaza Platt, located at thirty-three eleven East Delmar Boulevard, Suite two oh one, three thousand and fifty-seven square feet. The zone change request, uh, it's a conditional use permit for veterinary indoor animal confinement veterinary clinic. The proposed use is veterinary indoor animal confinement veterinary clinic. Letter sent for twenty-four, four, zero, against zero. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff supports our proposed conditional use permit. Proposed motion? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Danny Tejina for the record. And I'm here to speak in favor of this item and answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions for that?
Yeah, ya está hecho el edificio, ¿verdad? Y ya tienen como slaps, right?
Yes, yes.
Estaba viendo si, si está la lista, ¿verdad?, de que, de que va a haber en cada... Ah, sí, ya, ya la vi. I'm sitting.
We, we presently have, um, four contracted tenants, and then obviously if approved, um, this would be our, our fifth.
Ah, que se propusieron ahí.
It's a nail salon, a, um, an insurance office, a local bike shop. I figured out the fourth one is.
Restaurant?
Yes, that's right. Kisi.
Kisi? Es que por eso, like, I, that's why I asked, because I don't see Kisi here. It says Otilla's Restaurant?
Oh, that's, that's, yes.
Is it that one?
Correct, yes. That's right, that's the, Kisi.
That's the Kisi owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak against this item? If not, any other questions for the applicant or staff? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, and a second from Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to review and consideration of the following master plan. Item eight A. Review and consideration of the G-three Logistics Park Master Plan. The intent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Needmore Delores LLC, Engineers KCI Technologies. Proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this fifteen lot development is within the ETJ. Location view? Aerial view? Proposed master plan? Plan, uh, comments from planning? Fire, traffic safety, and the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission and staff. Ivan Morales with KCI. Um, we concur with all the comments that were given to us for this. Any questions that anyone have?
Any questions from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions?
Motion to close, I mean, uh, support.
Oh, did you have a question?
Todo esto está aquí. Tienen que, tienen que pasar con todos. No, no está Arturora?
Arturo?
¿Se llama Arturo? El de.
Mr. Chavez?
Mr. Chavez?
Oh, Mr. Ramon, Ramon Chavez?
Ramon Chavez?
No.
We're wondering, Mr. Navarro, about the floodplain and like the mix of industrial and any sort of considerations here, but, like, policy-wise, there isn't something in place that could maybe, like, help us, like, enhance the situation so that similar things to Pinnacle don't happen?
As far as drainage or, um, the actual floodplain? If you wanna talk as far as what the specs are for that?
Well, Andrea Deanda here for the record.
Andrea Deanda with KCI, for the record. Uh, we are currently, um, developing a flood study. We did, went to go take cross-sections, which is one of the comments that we received, and we do plan on analyzing the flood study before we continue with the development.
And what would be, um, like, where would the water lead to, um, in terms of drainage? Like, is there, like, a neighborhood around or any homes?
Um, it's currently, there's currently another industrial park next to, next to us, and the land to the north is empty. Um, since we're not, we're currently going the annexation process, um, we're the last part of the city of Laredo limits up to now, and to the north of us, there is a pond.
Correct me if I'm mistaken, but there is a staff due diligence to make sure all this is done prior to coming to us, right?
There, yes, so not only does the engineer have to get this reviewed by environmental and...
So all that's already, all that's already preset and really done, 'cause I remember that at the council. They go through all this already.
To go through all the procedures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commission? I believe Commissioner Garcia had a...
Go back to closing, introduce as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight B. Review of the revision of the Barcadero Southeast Quadrant Master Plan. The intent is industrial and commercial. The purpose of the revision is to reconfigure phases, including rephasing portions of fastened road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Body's Development is the applicant. Engineers Camacho Hernandez. Proposed use is industrial and commercial, and the zoning for this master plan is M-one and B-four. Location view? Aerial view? Proposed master plan? Comments from planning? Fire, traffic safety, and the proposed motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commission members. My name is Ricardo Camacho with Camacho and Associates. Um, I'm here for any questions, if you may.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
No? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Subject to one.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight C. Review of the revision of the Sapphire Industrial Park Master Plan, formerly known as Emerald Industrial Park Master Plan. The intent is industrial. The purpose of this revision is to reconfigure phases and remove acreage, former phase four.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Provident Realty Advisors. Owner is Emerald River View Development. Engineer is Top Side Civil Group. Proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this thirty-four lot development is M-one. Location view? Aerial view? Proposed master plan? Comments from planning? Fire? Traffic safety, and the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, Top Side Civil Group, representing the applicant. Um, we concur with staff's comments. There is a, to, to change to the master plan. The previously named master plan, Emerald, uh, Emerald Industrial Park Master Plan, encompassed more acreage. So as far as the master plan approval, we're gonna go back to the original acreage, 'cause really the only thing that changed was the phasing. Uh, one of the phases got cut in half, so we're gonna go ahead and, um, and, uh, emulate the, the, uh, the original master plan. And just to give you a visual is, this was the origi, oh, no, no. The original master plan that's on file that was approved in, uh, January second, twenty twenty. He flipped it into black. There we go, there we go. Trucks are, are going, tires down. This was the original master plan back, approved back in, uh, January second, twenty twenty. This is the same one that we submitted to planning after discussions with the owner and the planning department. Um, they wanted just the original acreage to be put back in. The only thing that changed was the original phase three was split in half. Other than that, there are no changes to the original master plan. If you have any other questions?
Van a tener entrada y salida por donde?
Ahorita, in, uh, in the original master plan, there is a entrance that's already constructed off of Mines Road, um, across Green Ranch. Yes, and then it goes, uh, it goes down. Let me give you, uh, the bird's eye view here. Put this back up. So the entrance is off of Mines Road. Um, the future river road is coming in here. Um, so there'll, there'll be some interconnecting there as, as the way it's approved already.
Like, on the, on the down?
Yes, now the intent, and this mainly a question for planning, but, uh, river roads, I think gonna be mainly a, it's not gonna be a truck route. So it's just to have secondary axes.
Secondary.
But, um, uh, this is, that's the way it's, the way it was approved September second, twenty twenty. Like I said, no changes to that, other than a phasing change.
And a TIA is still pending, right?
Yes, uh, we'll, uh, we'll add to that TIA.
There's no other questions for staff, the engineer? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Because, because the river road was brought up, we understand that the, the, the group that's doing the design, they have the layout and that they're, they're getting ready to present. So that's another presentation that you'll be receiving once that, that alignment's done.
A motion to approve, subject to comments?
Yes, I just make it for comment real quick. So I, I just wanted to add, so in light of some of the information that has been presented by, by the jury here today about, uh, the adding back of some of that acreage, I would just, if it could be possible in the motion, just to be fully recognized that they are adding that acreage back to go back to the... Yes, he's modifying some of the phasing on the, on the industrial park, but just to refer that it does tie back to the original from January of twenty twenty. Some, somehow in that motion that you made. Just as I, that the, that's...
As noted by...
There you go.
That some of the original acreage is being added back into that, into the...
Okay. Motion to approve, subject to the comments, and noting that it does tie back to the approval previously given to this project.
Second.
So a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight D. Review and consideration of the southeast commercial master plan at Buena Vista Ranch. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Buena Vista Ranch Land Development. Engineer is Top Side Civil Group. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this two-lot development is B-four. Location view? Aerial view? Proposed master plan? Comments from planning? Fire, traffic safety? And the proposed motion?
Thank you.
And members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, Top Side Civil Group, representing the owner. Um, we just have one clarification on the traffic comment, where it says phase two should be platted before phase one. Um, I think the phase two, if you see it on the shaded area, is the one that abuts the roadways. However, in phase one, we are gonna build, you can see the access easement that accesses off of Cuatro Vientos, also worms the road. And so in phase one, that access easement is included, so we'll be building the road, um, in phase one. And then phase two would come after with the road already built in there. So just to clarify that note on, on traffic.
So you're asking for that amendment, or you're asking for the comment to be...
I guess the way it reads, phase two should be platted first to provide access to phase one. We can just get rid of it.
It's eighteen.
You know, phase one's already gonna provide the access for both phase one and phase two.
Phase two should be platted first to provide access to phase one?
But phase one is gonna build the access for both phase one and phase two.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like you can't get it.
Yes, it looks like you can't get it.
It's behind it.
Yes, because it's in the back, but, uh, we're building the roads to get to the back.
So what, what would you like to refer to?
Remove it? If we had approved without traffic comment number one?
Okay.
We understand what he's saying.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Striking.
Striking out, traffic safety, um, comment number one.
Have a motion? A second? Second by, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on now to consideration of the following preliminary plaits and preliminary e-plaits. Item nine A, preliminary consideration of the southeast commercial subdivision one at Buena Vista Ranch. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Buena Vista Ranch Land Development. Engineer, Top Side Civil Group. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one lot development is B-four. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? The proposed preliminary plat? Comments from planning? Fire, traffic safety? And the proposed motion?
Ricardo Villarreal again here, representing the owner. Um, same thing. This is just the actual plat of phase one. Um, same comment is on traffic. If we can kind of mirror for the master plan, we can omit traffic comment number one.
Is it mismo?
Yeah, it's the same.
The first one was the master plan, which is two phases, and this one's the plat.
This is the plat?
The plat.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and to, um, strike traffic safety comment number one?
Have a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item nine B. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Sapphire Industrial Park, phase three. The intent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Applicant is Provident Realty Advisors. Owner is Emerald River View Development. Engineer is Top Side Civil Group. The proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this six-lot development is M-one. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Preliminary plat? Comments from planning? And the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Ricardo Villarreal, for the record. Top Side Civil Group, representing the applicant. Um, this is that, a phase within that Sapphire master plan that we're plating. Um, we concur with staff's comments, so if anybody has any questions for me?
Mandaron una carta, o tú? Del variants?
No, no, esta no. That's the, the siguiente.
Yo también estoy viendo ese.
Which one? The, the variants letter?
Ese es nine C.
Nine B.
No, we're on nine B right now. Pues ya quédate parado ahí. Me confundes, oigan.
I did your shirt.
Did your shirt? Okay, y ese no tiene nada, ¿verdad?, el nine B. No tiene traffics. No, ni nada. Okay. What are their wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item nine C. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Wisdom Industrial Park and the granting of a variance to allow a dead-end street to exceed the five-hundred-foot threshold for certain, to section three dash two J of the subdivision ordinance. The intent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is North Laredo Industrial Park. Engineer is Top Side Civil Group. Proposed use is industrial. The zoning for this eleven lot development is M1. Location view. Area view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire, traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Can we put back the traffic view, please?
Looking for the comments? Ricardo Villarreal with Top Side Civil Group representing the applicant. I promise for the last time tonight here to discuss the project. I concur with staff's comments. Just want to give P and Z and the members of the commission an update as per discussions with the planning department, you know, the big pow-wow meetings that we have. The original plat had two cul-de-sacs. In an effort to continue access to our neighboring properties, it came to agreement to extend Wisdom Boulevard to the north, to connect to the north line so that the adjacent neighbors can come in and continue that road, or they themselves have a better way out of this area. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
That was the variance, eh?
Yeah, well, the variance was for the cul-de-sacs because they're longer than five hundred feet. So the variance, so the variance stays for this one cul-de-sac. Yeah. And then the other one gets moved, and, but just to give you, I just want to give you all an idea of the discussions and how we are going to move forward with the project, addressing the comments.
We're really looking at the future to be able to get the trucks from that area up and out and then come back around, because if they come straight down, they're right by the bridge. We already have that problem today. Yeah, so we just want to make sure we had a road going, I'm going to call that north for just right, for long-term purposes, but then we can, we can connect and get them to go out and then come back around.
Through the other route?
Go around.
Yeah, they'll go north, and then this is Mines Road here and two fifty-five, which ends at the bridge. So for them to come this way, come down Mines Road and loop around to get into the bridge.
There's no other questions for staff or for the engineer? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion?
Second.
What is the motion to approve with?
So we have a motion and a second by all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine D. Preliminary consideration of the replat of lot two A, lot three A, and lot four, block one, and lot three, block two, acta vista subdivision plat into Escondido Twin Home subdivision. The intent is residential. Twin Homes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is WW Escondido Limited Partnership. Engineer is Peewa Consulting. Proposed use is residential. The zoning for this seventy-lot development is B3, PUD, Community Business District Plan Unit Development. Location view. Area view. Street view. Proposed replat. Comments from planning. Fire. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Rudy Santillan from Peewa Consulting, and we're in agreement with all comments, all of staff comments.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Are there any questions from the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to the comments.
You have a motion? Second. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to reconsideration of the following preliminary plaits and preliminary replats. Item ten A, preliminary reconsideration of the plat of Mbakadero Southeast Quadrant, phase one. The intent is for the dedication of a right-of-way, Palm Lake Drive, and drainage right-of-way. The purpose of this reconsideration is to reconfigure phases and changing Fasken Boulevard to a different phase.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Farias Development. Engineers Comacho Hernandez and Associates. Proposed use is the intent the intent is for the dedication of a right-of-way. The zoning for this three-lot development is R1A, B4, and M1. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
I feel Comacho again for this, we don't have any issues with the comments. This is basically going with the revised master plan where we eliminated a phase from this and we kind of re-associated some phases, so this is just the preliminary plat that goes with that master plan amendment.
We only have one one street?
One street that leads to another master plan that I guess you're going to be seeing unit one tonight. The final plat for unit one, Palm Lake, phase one. And then we eliminated from this plat some right-of-way for Fasken Boulevard that's going to be associated with another phase of the project.
So we're going to have two?
Eventually, yes, they'll have secondary access for the rest of the land.
Exit or?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know other questions?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing. And approve this.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to the consideration of the following final plaits and final replats. If there's no objection from your commissioner staff, can I hear a motion to hear items eleven A through eleven G?
Motion to hear eleven A. Eleven G, all together.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Can I now hear a motion to, motion of action for items eleven A through eleven G?
Motion to approve eleven A through eleven G. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now going on to, oh, we need to read them to record, sorry.
All right. Final consideration of SKG Columbia Industrial Park North. Final consideration of the plat of Palm Lake subdivision phase one. Final consideration of the plat of Pinnacle Industries Center FM fourteen seventy-two, unit eight. Final consideration of the replat of all lot five, block two, Pinto A subdivision phase one, and a tract of land conveyed by deed to PG Alpha, PG Omega, PG Indigo, five oh one Imperial Partners into lot five A, block two, Pinto A subdivision phase one. Final consideration of the replat of lot one, block one, San Isidro Northeast Corner Retail Plat into lots one A, one B, one C, one D, and one E. Block one, San Isidro Northeast Corner Retail Plat. Final consideration of the replat of the east eighteen point fifty-two feet of lot four and west eighteen point fifty-two feet of lot five. Block seventeen-nine, Western Division, into lot five A, block seventy-nine, Western Division. Final consideration of the plat of Monte Verde subdivision, phase two.
Okay, so we do well, for eleven C, we do have Commissioner Portillo against? So for just for the record for eleven C. Now going on to the consideration of model subdivision compliance. Item twelve A, consideration of model subdivision role compliance of the plat of El Enche subdivision unit eighteen, the intent is residential. So can I? Just have a motion.
Motion?
To-
You need a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to approve item four A.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to director's comments.
Sorry. We just have some confusion going on here, but we're just helping out a constituent here. Director's report, so I know I was to bring the checklist, but I thought it was important to bring the water presentation first. So we'll have the checklist presentation just so that you could see what needs to be turned in by an engineer. We'll have that going. We spoke to legal with Amber. So there is discussion about lobbyists and what that is and how that impacts you all. So we asked Amber if she could come to our office so she can explain it to us. There is, we do have in our ordinance that there can be lobbyists, but they have to register. So, and a lobbyist, if they register, they're allowed to reach out to you. Correct me if I'm wrong in any if they're not registered, they're not supposed to reach out to you. So we're just going to try to clear the air on that so that we're all on the same page, because I too wanted to understand how that works. But this came up during the city, the last city council meeting, so I thought I'd bring that to you. Hopefully Amber can have something that she could present to you all from the legal department. If not, I'll ask Mr. Adolondo to help out with that. But just to clear the air so you understand how that would impact you when it comes to an open meetings violation of sorts. So we'll be bringing that to you.
It would be great if you can invite like engineers and people that we usually deal with, just so that they are aware of
Absolutely, absolutely. And then to let you know who can contact you, you know, so we'll go over that. You see that the, I mean, this is a small thing, but city councils asked us to go bigger with those yellow signs that you see, so we're going to we're going to have to go bigger, so we'll probably bring you the samples so that you, you can see that. And then there was discussion about that, the, we do a two-hundred-foot radius mailout. Comments were that we're not getting people to respond or that we might have to go you know, larger. That's something that we're considering doing, maybe going to three hundred feet just to help out. That's, that's something that we could do internally. But just because we're getting comments that people aren't seeing the letters or we're not getting out far enough, so we can easily do that and we could just get more at the more addresses and send out. So that's something we're probably going to do because according to council, they're seeing that we're getting so many letters sent out to surrounding property owners, zero in favor, zero against, and, you know, so they feel if we go to a broader area that maybe we get some, some more feedback. So we're going to try to do that. We'll let you all know when we do, so that you're aware that we started to implement that. So that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I got some questions from people about the Dilmar Overly District and like there, I think there are some rumors that it's going to be like a shopping center or mall and like people are, I don't know. I think after the workshop that they had, like kind of, you know.
So we had a meeting yesterday with the company Able City who was hired to do research for us. They compiled all the information. They're ready to present. We're looking at, they emailed the information. We're going through it right now. Once they have that cleaned up, we'll have them make a presentation to you all. It's a presentation, then it would have to go to council. If council agree to the overlay, then we have to come back around again and come to you all to hold on it and then go to council. So we have some more work to do, but in general, what it is, is we're trying to protect the vista of the street. So the overlay, what we're trying to do is protect it from somebody knocking down the building and putting a different building. We'd like them to, let's say they put an antique store, well, that they would keep the vista of the house as is, not knock it down and put a two-story building there. So it's just an overlay to protect that, to maintain the integrity of the house look. So that if it does become a business, because we see the traffic picking up and we know it's, you know, eventually might turn, somebody might be interested to put something there. But if a CPA firm, architects, anything like that, if they go in there, that they maintain the facade of the, of the house. So that's what that overlay kind of, it's a backup for these people so that we don't see, because a lot of people don't really care for the building that's on the end, even though that was done legally and everything was fine. But this is an overlay that would protect that. So that's, that's what's, what's being presented to the, to the owners of those homes. And as we get the feedback, we'll see if they, they want it or if, you know, if they don't, then the council has said if they don't want it, we won't do it, but they're trying to get feedback right now to see what the consensus would be.
Okay, yeah, and hopefully that there can be, I guess, more communication. I'm sure Able City will take care of that. But in terms of perception of like people thinking that something is happening.
We still have two more stakeholder meetings to do. So we'll be getting out to them again and sending out mailouts again and meeting with them. The last time we met, we met at the fire station, was very convenient for a lot of people, so we'll be doing the same thing. They will be doing it, so.
Thank you. There's no other questions for director or staff?
Just an apology to Commissioner Garcia and probably Mr. Angel and maybe some of the others, that he called me, he was upset because I didn't return the call. And so I just want to apologize here in the meeting that, that I missed the call, but I will stay on top of that. Now, some people purposely, I don't have to, no.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries or adjourn?